Excellent. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. This should be easy. I've only got the first three items and they're pretty simple. The first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
It's as best as we could do.
Yeah, we're all, we're not in sync.
There's a delay.
And I, as Kay mentioned, we were sorry to see Justin go. He had reached his term limits, but I would like to extend a warm welcome to the new members of the Planning Commission. And, and one former member also, Arlie Herbert, Louis Ryman, and Jordan Potter. And I thought if we could just quickly go around and introduce ourselves and perhaps where we live, township or city. And Patrick, could you go first?
Sure. Can everyone hear me?
Yep.
All right, good. Patrick Byron, this is my third year on the Planning Commission. I live in downtown Winona. And it's been an enlightening experience being on the Planning Commission. Great people to work with.
Thanks, Patrick. And has Lynn joined us yet? Lynn Carlson?
Yes, I know.
Would you like to introduce yourself?
I'm Lynn Carlson. I'm starting my second term on this commission. And I currently reside in Rolling Stone.
Thank you. And Michael Flynn?
Yeah, I'm, this is my second year. I'm in Hillsdale Township. And many of you know me. I've been around for a long time and still hanging around like fine wine.
Thank you. And Arlie? Arlie Herbert?
Yes, I was on the Planning Commission previously and I'm back at it. I'm also a township supervisor for Norton Township and reside in the country outside of Rolling Stone.
Excellent. And Louis Ryman, could you introduce yourself?
Well, I'm Louis Ryman. I run a little farm operation out here in Fremont Township.
Welcome.
And Louis has been on the Economic Development Authority and served faithfully there for a number of years, so that's why I know him.
Oh, wonderful. Steve Jacob?
Hi, I'm Steve Jacob. I'm on the Winona County Board of Commissioners and I farm up in the township.
Excellent. And Jordan Potter?
I am Jordan Potter. I live in downtown Winona, but I grew up in Stockton. And I do a lot of work with my dad's company, Potter Construction, for the townships and farms in the county.
Great. Thank you, Jordan. And we've got everyone, except me, I'm Kelly Stanage. Live in Wiscoy Township. And I, once again, just I'd like to extend a welcome to the new members of the Planning Commission. Thank you for joining us. The, and the next item of, item of business, I will turn over to Kay, which is the election of officers. Kay Qualley?
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. So, once a year, I become Recording Secretary with a small s, just for the purpose of the election of officers. So, we take them in order, Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary. And the nominations do not have to be seconded. And one can be nominated who is not present if they have agreed to serve or will agree to serve thereafter. And so, the only missing member we had was Mark Clark, who was serving in the capacity of Vice Chair last year and is always very willing to serve. So, then when we have no more nominations for the first one, the Chair, then the Planning Commission will vote to elect a Chair. Will then move to Vice Chair and Secretary. And then we'll turn the gavel over to the Chair again. So, at this time, the nominations are open for Chair.
Kay, did anybody talk to Mark if he was interested?
So, yes, Mark has indicated that he will serve in any of the positions if nominated and voted in.
Well, I nominate him for the Chair then.
All right. And we'll, we'll vote on them in order. Once all nominations are concluded, are there other nominations for the position of Chair of the Planning Commission at this time? Any other nominations for the Chair? Hearing no other nominations for Chair, we would like to boot on Mark Clark's nomination at this time. And do a call or else, if that's too difficult, we can just say. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, Louis. That was an aye from Louis.
I'm for it.
Okay, very good. So, there were no nays that I heard of, so Mark Clark would be Chair. I'd like to open the nominations for the position of Vice Chair at this time. You can self-nominate as well.
I'll nominate Mike Flynn.
Kay, any other nominations for the position?
Well, I think, actually, yes, Kay, I think it would be good to have some co-ed representation in the officers. Kelly, Kelly, have you any interest in serving as Vice Chair? I know you were Secretary.
I, I would be willing to serve. I, you know, I don't have, I'm not opposed to it.
Okay, well, I nominate Kelly then.
All right. So this time, we'll take an individual vote and we'll do them in order. So first, we're going to be voting on Mike Flynn as Vice Chair. Commissioner Jacob?
Yeah, aye.
Kelly Stanage?
I'll abstain since he was also nominated.
Okay. Mike Flynn?
Aye.
Patrick Byron?
Uh, nay.
Lynn Carlson?
Nay.
Arlie Herbert?
Aye.
Louis Ryman?
Uh, yes, yes.
Jordan Potter?
Aye.
So we have, we have the majority. So, Mike Flynn is elected as Vice Chair.
All right.
You stop in the position of Secretary. Do you want to hear the nomination for Secretary?
I'd nominate Kelly again if she's interested.
Are you happy to do it?
Are there other nominations for Secretary at this time? Hearing none, all those in favor of Kelly Stanage being Secretary for 2021, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Qualley? There are no nays. All right, congratulations. You have your slate of officers. So Mark Clark being absent, Mike Flynn, it comes to you then for the gavel and to run the meeting for the approval of the agenda item five. Thank you.
Okay, well, I didn't expect to do this so fast here. Hey, you're going to have to help me out here as we proceed on because we'll work our way through this. We'll make it. The first thing on our agenda is to approve the agenda. Is there any changes?
I can hear.
Or I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
And who was the second?
I'll second it.
Patrick? Patrick was the first and Jordan Potter the second, is that correct?
Correct.
That's.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? So moved, all in favor. Approval of the minutes from December 17th, 2020. That's included in your packet. I hope everybody's had time to review it.
I do have them up on the screen as well, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, I see it. And is there any corrections or changes? If there is not, I would entertain a motion to accept the December 17th, 2020 minutes as stated?
Yes, I do.
Patrick seconds.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? So we've approved the minutes of December 17th, 2020. Let's see, our next order is Rules of Procedure, Annual Review and Adoption. There is a lengthy listing of the previous rules. I did go through that myself, but is there any discussion on it?
I'll move to approve.
Is there a second to approve?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? So the rules and procedures are as stated in your packet. And then we can move on to our petitions. It's the Car Revocable Trust Solar Club 23, asking for a conditional use permit to allow a one megawatt utility scale solar project in pursuit of Chapter 12.3 of the Winona County Ordinance.
Mr. Chair and Planning Commission, if I might have the floor for just a moment?
Yes, you may.
Okay. So, at 4:30 today, we received a message from one of the petitioners, Mr. Chuck Bice, who is present and certainly would provide testimony at the appropriate time as a petition. But he, because we had a lot of neighbor comments come in late in the, in the day and yesterday, which is not atypical, but it was a fact that, that occurred, that the Planning Commission tabled this petition until next month so that they can have time to respond to the neighbor concerns. And I emailed him back quickly and said, please come at seven. The Planning Commission can decide if they want to hear it or they want to table it. Staff will do whatever we're told in this regard. And the Assistant County Attorney, Stephanie Nuttall, is on as well. And she has been informed. Thank you.
Well, again, this is Mike Flynn. I, I think that's a reasonable request to table this if it's not ready.
I agree.
And I would, I think we need a motion and a second.
I move to table. Lynn Carlson moves to table till next month.
Second.
We have a second from Arlie. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Hearing none, we have tabled this 021821-01. Thank you for that information. Next on our agenda on the docket is petition. It's in regards to a residence in pursuit of Chapter 10.4.6. And it comes to us from Matthew and Tessa Nelson and John Farnholz in regards to a conditional use for dwelling. With that, I could turn it over to our staff for a presentation on this petition.
This is Eric. Can everybody hear me real good?
Yes.
If we could, I guess, go into the PowerPoint presentation then?
Yep, I hear you, Eric.
Okay. Okay, this request, 21821-2, is a conditional use permit to increase the residential densities in the Agricultural Resource Conservation zoning district pursuant to 10.4.636. The findings that must be made for this petition are that of 5.54, number two. Next slide.
The petitioners. Are we supposed to be getting the slides on?
Yeah, we're just seeing this handsome mug, aren't we?
That's good, Lynn.
All right, I'll stop sharing that. Eric, we'll see what the problem is.
Yeah, I don't see the slides from my vantage point neither.
All I see is your big mug. All I see is yours, Arlie.
Do you want me to take over?
Go, Steph.
Give me just a second, I can pull them up.
I've got two of the three of them. I thought I had the third one too. Hang on.
Is it Ann's fault?
Probably.
Anyway, while they're trying to get that ready, I guess to summarize a few of the points, the current owner is John Farnholz and his daughter and son-in-law wish to purchase approximately three acres adjacent to their existing farm status. The three acres, there we go. Slides, if we go to slide two, shows the approximate building location. There is a portion of a cultivated field that sits in kind of the northern, northeastern part of the selected two. Now, you can see just by the configuration that I've drawn showing the proposed parcel that the math comes out to 2.618. Please keep in mind that that is very tentative. The applicants have stated that they wish to have close to three acres. So they will be adjusting the parcel boundaries and the size to kind of accommodate where the house would go in relationship to where the septic system would be designed. The goal or the key with this approach to keep them from requiring a variance was they needed to keep the parcel less than 40% prime soils. So the configuration that you see illustrated on this slide is showing that it's grabbing a lot of the rough land, kind of a drainage basin and hedge of trees and also some of the old pasture area. So it's, it was their desire to try to get that square footage or that acreage of that parcel so less than 40% of that entire parcel would be under that prime soil definition. Next slide.
Say, Eric? Eric?
Yes.
Can you go back to that last slide?
Sure.
Okay, that one. Right where it says the 2.61 acres, what, what is that? Is that pasture?
Yeah, that's showing what's roughly in that red boundary just by snapping, snapping approximate based on their site plan.
But I mean, what is that, what is that field? Is that, is that pasture land or crop land?
That's pasture land, but then you can see where the house would go right below the, the yellow arrow. That is crop land. That is prime soils.
Okay.
That is, that is prime soils that, where that would be located. But again, the goal would be to try to get the parcel big enough by accompanying the rough land around it so they don't run afoul of that prime soil ratio.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Yep. Now, the next, the slide is what the applicants have kind of illustrated, showing that there would be a location of a house kind of in that general area in the septic system. And the blue line that you see is what they articulated, showing that they would drive, that would be the driveway coming off of Meagan Drive to the east. Currently there, I believe there is an access that is adjacent to the Farnholz shed there that you see on the very far east. And the driveway would come in around the backside of that tree line to serve that building site. Keep in mind that they will be required, if this is approved, to survey that particular selected acreage. And I believe it's my understanding that that would be a 33-foot easement to contain that proposed driveway to connect that parcel to an official township road for a legal access. Next slide. Now, this kind of reverts back to that first slide that shows the red perimeter of the proposed building site. And in this GIS coverage, I've selected one, two, and three type soils, which are defined as prime by the zoning ordinance. So you can see that the actual house would rest on prime soils. But again, it's trying to make that parcel large enough by grabbing other type of soils that are four or higher to make that ratio, to make that combination meet the performance standards of the ordinance and that they would not need a variance by this action as well. Next slide. Now, this is a little bit distorted, but when I talk about prime soils, those black squiggly lines show the different soils. You can see where the building site would be. Those two soil groups in that area are prime. But then it just shows that they are, they follow contours and elevations. So they're, they're really irregular when you look at the soil types. So when we look at the ratio as far as meeting those standards, those are, those are kind of the dynamics in play with this. Next slide. This, this map shows the LiDAR or the two-foot contours. So this would somewhat show you the drainage patterns. You can see that it sits on the higher point of that, of that field. So the house would be on a well-drained, relatively sitting higher plateau than the surrounding area, roughly, you know, around 1,300 as far as elevation. And you can kind of see to the east of the building site, there's a drainage ravine. You can see how it dips and it shows somewhat of a drainage phenomenon there coming into the east. It kind of shows that the swale located below is an area where runoff goes. It's not conducive for row cropping in that swale and that old pasture area. Next slide. Closing point is, the petitioners did meet with Wiscoy Township regarding this. And Wiscoy Township has indicated that they support the request as submitted. So at this point, I hope you've had a chance to kind of review the staff report and the findings of fact that staff has prepared in regards to this application. And should you have any questions at this time, I will do my best to answer them.
Eric, this is Patrick. Enlightening what Tessa Nelson in her summary here of why they wanted to have this property. One of the experiences for their family of raising animals. What bearing, if any, does an animal number have a bearing on this property? Are they up to a certain limit? Just a clarification on this.
Well, there's no setback for any animal combination up to 10 animal units. Between 10 and 50, you start to get some degree of feedlot permitting. And when you get up to 50 animal units, that's where you start to see the thousand-foot setback apply and some more regular, rigorous feedlot permitting that's associated with a site like that.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Just to clarify that. Appreciate that.
Any other questions of Eric? Are the petitioners available to speak or what is a good time for them? Eric?
Yeah, I believe I've seen them on the roster there that have signed up. I believe they are tuned into the, to the meeting here.
Do you have anything more that you want to offer, Eric, before we move on?
No, I'll, I'll, I'll rest unless there's some questions later on.
And then I'll ask again, is there a desire for the petitioners to speak?
Yeah, we're, we're here. So, one of the things that, purposes of building there is, you know, Tessa grew up there, the farm was originally John's father's farm. We just want to continue to add to that legacy with our children eventually. Multi-generational.
Thank you.
If you have any other questions, be happy to answer.
Yeah, we'll come back if we need to though. Thank you. I guess I can bring the hearing back to, if there's no other questions, we could open up, or a vote to open a public hearing?
You do need a motion in order to have a vote.
Yep. I'm sorry, I meant to say a motion. Does anybody make a motion?
I make a motion and we'll run a hearing.
Do I have a second?
Patrick, second.
And all in favor, say aye to open the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye? Anybody opposed to opening the public hearing? Hearing none, our public hearing is open. Is there anybody wishing to speak at the public hearing? Anybody online? Kay, do you have anybody online or any information for me?
I am unaware of anybody wishing to speak for or against the petition at this time, Mr. Chair.
Okay, for formality, I'll ask again. Does anyone else wish to speak in favor or against this petition? And then a third time, is there anybody else willing to speak for or against this position? At this hearing? If not, that's the third time, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Patrick?
You have a second? Hearing that, all, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed, say nay? Our public hearing is closed. Before we go to our findings of fact, is there any other discussion items?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion. This is Kelly Stanage, that we approve the petition, accept the findings of fact as presented and require the conditions as presented.
That's a great motion. Do I have a second in that motion?
I'll second that.
Motion and second at all, in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed, the same. Motion has moved.
Mr. Chair, was that a second by Jordan Potter by chance?
Yes.
Yes, it was.
Yes, it was.
So with that, I, Kay, I think we can move on to our next petition. We can move on to docket 028182103. And that's Andrew and the
Darian.
Darian Frickson in regards to conditional use permit for an on-farm retail store for meat, pork, poultry, and related items as Fricksons Farms LLC in pursuit of chapter 10.4.6 of the Winona County Ordinance. Who's the staff member that is assigned to this one?
That would be me. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Great.
KB, and I'll pull your PowerPoint up for you, Megan.
Thank you.
Yeah, so hang on a second here. I gotta stop sharing this. Give me one second to pull it up.
This is, this is Patrick. Is it Megan or Megan?
Megan.
Megan.
Megan, Megan. Okay.
Yep, and I should make, just make a note here from the beginning. This petition is from Andrew and Darian Frickson, not Frickson Farms LLC. They called to make sure that I had clarified that because there is an adjacent farm under that name, so.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, can you see the PowerPoint now?
Yep.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
All right, Patrick delayed. Thank you.
All right, so this petition was submitted as a CUP request by Andrew and Darian Frickson. It's to allow operation of an on-farm store to sell meat, pork, poultry products, and retailed goods. They're transitioning from on-farm to off-farm goods. And in the process, they found out from the state of Minnesota that they need to have a CUP from the county. So they have been operating for about a year. So this is an existing operation that is expanding from on-farm sale to retail goods. So their request is pursuant to chapter 10.4.6.2 of the Winona County zoning ordinance. Go ahead, next slide. Their farm is located off County Road 104. If you're heading west on I-90, it's just past Nodine Aways. And you can actually see this from the interstate, the farm store. Next slide. Here, you can see I-90 there from above and County 104. The Frickson Farm has been there for many decades. You can see that there are two residences. We're talking about the residence on the right. It's, I wish I had a pointer. Yep, right there. Thank you. And the store is in the larger red and their sign associated with the store is in that smaller red box. Next slide, please. So they currently live on site. The building they're using is a 24-by-14 portable shed. It's on skids. There's no water or septic on site. There's none needed at this point on site, but they want to leave that possibility open just in case they need that in the future. They have designated at least two parking spaces. They do have a metal sign on site and a solar light there right at the driveway. And as I had stated before, they, they have been in operation for a year. But in the process of applying for their Minnesota Department of Ag Food Handlers license, they found out they need to take an extra step and get a CUP with the county. Go ahead, next slide. This is a view of the existing site. The shed is there on the right with a brown roof. You can see it's that 24-by-14 shed. And then their sign in the foreground. They are open two days a week. And on Thursdays, Darian does deliveries. And I understand she's delivering tonight. Otherwise, she'd be on the line with us. Let's see. That's all I had with that. Go ahead, next slide. Now, the township did meet on February 12th and we received a no comment response from them. Next slide. So we've, the staff's concluded that this use appears to be consistent with the complaint statements in support of local agricultural project, products. They're thereby preserving and protecting ag as a way of life in Winona County. I think furthermore, we found that the CUP would provide a long-term stability needed in the event that they were looking for funding in the future to add septic or water to their site or expand this shed. Go ahead, next slide. And do you have any questions for me that I can help respond to?
Megan is Arlie Herbert. The second house that's on the property there, do they have their own driveway? It looks like it.
Yep. If you go back to that, yep, right there, that's a separate driveway and it's actually a separate owner.
Okay, is there a separate valve septic on that property?
Yes, that's, the one on the left is a much, is a newer home. Yep.
Okay.
And the one on the right is a different owner with a different septic.
Okay, thank you.
It's my understanding that if they did expand the store, that that would require a new well.
It would require what? I'm sorry.
They, they believe they would need another well or a new well, I should say. So that's why they're hesitant, but they want to keep that option open.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? How about? I noticed you said February 12th for the township, but was it February 11?
Yes.
On the slide.
It was a week ago, it was a week ago today. It was the 11th.
Okay, no problem. I just look into detail. Are there petitioners here tonight?
I do not see them online. I thought maybe Andrew would join us, but they weren't here.
Unless it's Arlie, he's a petitioner there now. I think it's a straightforward one. Any other questions from the board? Otherwise, we'll move on to findings of fact and conditions.
You, you need to do that public hearing before findings of fact.
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot about the public hearing. I knew this would be a struggle for all of us tonight, especially me. I wasn't ready for it. Let's open a public hearing. Somebody make a motion to open the public hearing.
I do. I make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Public hearing is open. Is there anyone wishing to speak? For or against the petition? Second time, is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against this petition?
This is Matthew Nelson, actually. And we, Tessa and I have known the Frickson, Andrew, Andy Frickson. And we'd be in favor of that.
Yes, they're, they're great people, a good family from our area. I've worked with them for years. So I would love to stand up and say that's awesome. I'm happy for them.
Good, hard-working farmers.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, could you get them to state their name and address a little more clearly for the record? Just in case not everyone could hear them.
Okay, well, it's, okay, I'll have them state their names. Are they the previous petitioners?
Yeah, it's correct. Yep, Matthew and Tessa Nelson. We are located currently at 565 Main Street in Dakota. We have previously worked with Andy or Andrew Frickson and know the family quite well as being good, hard-working farmers and
Yep, they're awesome people.
So they, they definitely want to keep the farm alive and growing as much as they possibly can, you know, anyway.
Well, thank you for your contribution there and your statement. Is anyone else wishing to speak? The second time, is there anyone else wishing to speak for or against this petition? And the third and final, is there anyone else wishing to speak for or against this petition? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move, Patrick. Patrick seconds.
Patrick seconds. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. So move. Now to the next step. Findings of facts and conditions.
Well, this is Kelly Stanage again. I guess I would make a similar motion as the last one to adopt the findings of facts and the conditions as presented by staff and to approve, recommend this.
Is there a second? I heard a second. I think it was Jordan Potter, am I right?
Yep.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Nobody's opposed, so all in favor. Thank you. Kelly, I stalled so you would make my life easy tonight. Simplifies a lot of my memories of other things. That concludes our hearings for conditional uses. I think the next thing on our agenda, it's not Patrick, but I think, is there any updates from the Board of Adjustments?
Yeah, I have a couple of things that we did at the the last meeting on January 21st. We, we looked at the petitioner Rebecca Snyder in New Hartford Township on, at 44174 Runaway Drive. And that's kind of where I-90 splits into two pieces going down the hill from Nodine. And she just wanted to put an addition on her house that would extend within the right-of-way. And we didn't see it to be any issue and we voted in favor of that. And then the next petitioner. Sorry, I'm just flipping through my packet here. That was a variance for Randolph Erdman in Richmond Township. And that is, I believe it was County Road 3 up by Nodine. And they were wanting to, a variance to build a house within 1,000 feet of a feedlot. And we didn't seem to find anything wrong with that. There was a a little objection from the feedlot owner. He was worried that he wouldn't be able to expand in the future. But Lou was able to clear that all up and we voted in favor of that as well.
Thank you.
That was all we had that meeting.
Any updates from Steve Jacobs?
Yes, since our last planning commission meeting, Michael and Tamara Haim wishing to build on less than 40 acres came before the board and of course, we approved that. I think that's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you.
Move to adjourn.
Just before we adjourn, I'll just say thanks to everybody for putting up with me tonight. I wasn't expecting to chair a meeting.
Good job.
Good job, good job.
I'm doing this from Hawaii, so I didn't have any hard copy in front of me, so I was trying to go on my memory from reading through the computer. It's terrible out here. It's 74 degrees right now and it rained this morning, but that's okay.
We hope you get a sunburn.
No. I did have to be careful of that, but I, thanks for everybody tolerating. I knew there would be fragmented parts there, but we, we had a pretty easy agenda tonight with the changes. So again, I appreciate everybody's help to get through this, this time. And we'll, Mark Clark is back next time. And with that, I get back to that adjournment.
My second, Kelly's move to adjourn, Lynn Carlson.
Okay, we are adjourned.
Enjoy the weather, Mike.
I will. I'm coming back March 7th, March 7th, so I hope the weather's a lot warmer than what you've had.
Hey, we're supposed to have 39 on Tuesday.
That's good.
I figure about 70.
How many people be running around in their gym shorts?
60, 70 degree difference.
Yeah, somebody was in the mall, I guess, with their t-shirt we were talking about earlier, but but no thanks for that cold weather you guys endured the last two weeks.
Oh, well, we don't have, the people in Texas.
Texas.
Yeah.
Having a lot of trouble.
We're here nationally. Okay, thank you very much.
Good night.
Thank you. Good night, all. Thank you. Very good. Good night.